All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the Wayne County Commission to Order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Basham.
Here.
Commissioner Baydun.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Coleman. She's trying to log in, Chair.
Okay, we'll come back to her.
Commissioner Dobbs.
Here.
Commissioner Hattis.
Present.
Commissioner Colleen.
Made it.
Commissioner Kenezak.
Here.
Commissioner Morecki.
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
Commissioner Varga.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware.
Present.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Here.
Chair Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Coleman. You have a call in person.
Okay, do you know if Commissioner Clark Coleman is dialing in or she's trying to zoom in?
She was trying to zoom in. She said it's waiting, it says waiting for the host to let her in.
Has the host let her in?
Octavia, do you see her number?
I don't see anyone trying to join in. There's no one for me to admit to their own. I'll give her a call.
Okay, give her a call and tell she can dial in or maybe zoom back out and then come back in on the Zoom. All right, next item, please.
Approval of the minutes from the March 12, 2020 meeting.
Go move.
Support Baker McCormick.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any changes, deletions to the minutes? Any changes to the minutes? Any errors? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Obstain. Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next item.
Unfinished business, there is none listed. We are moving to new business.
Okay, before we go to new business, let me, just for everyone listening and on the Zoom call, apologize, we had some Zoom technical issues with our account, which is why we started late. Typically, I like to start as close on time as possible, so apologize for that. Hopefully, that's been resolved. And if it's not, we'll continue to make sure that we don't have this issue for any meetings upcoming or for our full board meeting. And has Commissioner Clark Coleman made it on yet? Okay, Octavia, work with Commissioner Clark Coleman to get, to join the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Item number D1, it's requesting commission acceptance of the resignation of Monique Stanton from the Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board.
Commissioner Klein.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'll second the motion from Commissioner Ware, but you know, this is the Oversight Board as part of the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, the Mental Health Authority. The Substance Use Disorder Board has the ability to spend $5 million of a certain type of money that comes out of Lansing, I think, I don't know, Public Act 2, maybe. And they also advise and organize our Substance Use Disorder effort in Wayne County. So if Commissioner Ware wouldn't mind, I would move both items 1 and 2 for approval. The first one is to accept Monique Stanton's resignation from that board. The second one is a recommendation to appoint Ronald Taylor to the board. Mr. Taylor, you've got his resume. Mr. Taylor is the president and CEO of DAAA. So Commissioner Ware, if you don't mind, I'd like to move both of those for approval in one motion.
Yes, and I'll support your motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware.
Yeah.
You work closely with the SUD Board?
She's a member.
I am a member, so I support, and Tim is on the Mental Health Board. I support the motion. Monique has left, and I think that Mr. Ronald Taylor would be a fine addition to the board.
Commissioner Palomera, if you can continue for me for a second, please.
Through the, through the chair, this is Felicia.
All right ahead.
Item 1 is for receiving and filing.
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 1 is to receive and file, 2 is to approve. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on receiving and file item 1 and approving item 2. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Basham.
Yes.
Commissioner Baydun.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman. Commissioner Dobbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kenezak.
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner. Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
And that's who I was speaking to when I turned the meeting over to Commissioner Palomera. She's having a hard time getting in.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We're moving to item D3, requesting commission approval of the reappointments of David Katz, Commissioner Alicia Bell, and Commissioner Terry Morecki to the Wayne County Zoological Authority. Move up, Pro Val Varga.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. These appointments are every year, so as you can see, the date is from August 20 of 2020 to August 19 of 2021. So is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we will do a.
I just got on, because I was on, I was under the committee.
Okay.
But I was using the, I thought it was the committee of the whole, and it was a full board.
Okay, very good. Welcome, Commissioner. We're on item number 3, approval of reappointments to the Zoo Board.
Okay, all right.
All right, here, any further discussion on item number 3? We'll stay consistent, we'll just do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Basham.
Yes.
Commissioner Baydun.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman. Commissioner Dobbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kenezak.
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 4 is requesting commission approval of a fleeting business opportunity contract with a one-year option to renew between the Charter County of Wayne and Scanning America not to exceed $858,225 for removal, scanning, and document destruction services of court records located at the Vigliotti Building.
Okay, and who is here from the administration to speak to this?
Through the chair, Erin Wagner, Director of Procurement.
Okay, good morning.
So, the administration has been working with the courts, Third Circuit Court, as well as the Probate Court, to identify records that we can go through in the Vigliotti Building, scan, upload into a repository database, and then destroy those records so we're no longer needing to keep them on hand in paper form. The Department of Technology had reached out to a couple different firms looking to take on this, this project. It is a pretty significant magnitude, as well as working with Guide House to identify that and confirm that this document destruction is in fact 100% CARES Act eligible. And so, in working with the supplier, they will remove the records, they will scan the documents, index the documents, and then send those files to the courts. The courts will then review the files, make sure that they are appropriate and usable, upload them into their document systems, and then, once those records are deemed okay to destroy, then Scanning America will work with their subcontractor, Shred It, to properly destroy out those records.
Okay, I see a few hands up. Tim, Commissioner Colleen, then Commissioner Dobbs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Commission Counsel to explain what a fleeting business opportunity is, one of the categories in the procurement ordinance, but if our counsel could explain what the fleeting opportunity is, what the rules are around that.
Through the, through the chair. So, a fleeting business opportunity as defined under the procurement ordinance is an opportunity that's presented to the county that would become unavailable through ordinary competitive bidding opportunities. It's somewhat broad, it does give a few examples, but there is, I would say, some level of discussion, discretion with regards to what actually qualifies, but it does refer to opportunities that wouldn't be available under normal circumstances or an opportunity that will allow the county to experience significant price reductions, but it's only limited for a narrow period of time, and therefore, it was, would be considered fleeting.
Thank you, Counsel. I have one more question for you then. In the paperwork that was submitted, administration would have explained why they thought this was a fleeting business opportunity. Do we agree with the explanation that was given to us about why this category should be used?
Again, because the category is somewhat open and there's a level of discretion, there were no hard, fast rules to really compare it to. So I would say that so long as it appears reasonable, the procurement ordinance does talk about making sure that we document that the price that we're receiving is fair and reasonable value for what we're receiving, under the time constraints taken into account. But again, there are no hard, fast rules where we can compare to say, yes, it qualifies under Sub A or Sub B. It really is a category that's somewhat open to discretion. So as a staff, I don't know that we looked at that hard, because again, there are no hard, fast rules for us to compare it to.
Thank you, Counselor. And Madam Chair, I do think that's a discussion for another day to look at that provision in the procurement ordinance, but there is no doubt that we need help with our records. Anybody that ever been over in the Vigliotti Building knows that. So I will vote to approve this today, but I'm a little concerned about the lingering issue around how we define what a fleeting business opportunity is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dobbs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have about three questions, I think. So I just want to confirm that this is, this project is 100% CARES Act eligible and that the contract will be 100% paid with CARES Act funds?
Through the chair, that is correct. It is 100% CARES Act eligible, and the funds will be paid through, through the CARES Act fund.
Thank you. And then, do you have an estimate as to how long this project will take to complete?
So, the supplier will remove, scan, and destroy documents up until December 15, because at this time, the CARES Act funding runs out December 30. And part of the reimbursement is we have to have time in order to receive the final invoice and process it.
Okay, so if they don't finish and December 15 happens, then it's just, there will be leftover files in the building?
Yes, this, we are focusing right now on the Probate Court files, and so, you know, this is set up as a not to exceed, I believe it's well over 8,000 boxes they'll be going through to, to scan. And, you know, we're working with the Third Circuit Court to get their files situated into this program. And so, between the two, and it's been a collaborative effort between the courts and the administration to work to identify and make sure those files are ready so we can go through and, and using the CARES Act money, scan, upload, and destroy as many as possible with, given the timeframe that we have.
Okay, and then, so my, my final question was, I think you already answered this, that will this get us out of the Vigliotti Building? But I, I'm guessing there's more files there than just what is going to be scanned in this project?
Unfortunately, this is the start, but this is a very good start for us to begin this process.
Okay.
That is a, that is a sizable endeavor.
Okay, do you know if, once this project is done, if they get the, the amount of boxes that we're requesting scanned and out of there, are we able to consolidate the amount of space that we're leasing in the Vigliotti Building to, you know, a smaller area? And maybe next year, you know, have a lower lease amount?
No, I, I understand the question. I don't know that answer specifically. What I can do is work with our, our representatives that handle the lease through the administration, as well as, as the boxes are recorded or destroyed. And once we finalize this, we can talk about what size of footprint it is and report back to commission if, if, if agreeable.
Yes, okay, great. All right, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. Erin, through the chair, I just wanted to ask, how does this contract compare in cost to what was done, the contract that we led with the Register of Deeds a couple of years back?
Commissioner Anderson, I'll have to take a look at that a little closer. I'm not familiar with that specifically. I do know that when we put this contract, or we're talking to two different entities, Scanning America being one, looking at what the My Deal contract through the state was with, with their company, as well as a third supplier, which was based out on the East Coast. Scanning America, their pricing was the most competitive. And it is significantly lower than both the My Deal contract in a per document scanning and shredding, in shredding price.
Okay, and is this only court documents?
Currently, yes, it is only court documents.
And where are we at with other departments? Is that going to be, I would assume that it's, it's going to be an ongoing for years?
Yes, that, that is correct. You know, coming down the pipeline, as we are moving towards the criminal justice complex, there are a number of records that are in the existing court facilities, as well as the jails that we will need to scan, upload, and, and, you know, in some instances, destroy if applicable. And so, as, as the county is, is moving forward, we've developed work groups within the administration to, you know, put together, set forth the best plan forward on how to address all of the paper.
Okay, so I'm guessing you'll be working with the Clerk's Office and.
Correct.
And other, other departments. And is this a cloud-based storage?
Yes, I believe the, the Probate Court has a repository that they're, they're currently using. And so, these are historical records that are, you know, we're moving into the electronic system. Their current system, because I believe they're, they're now, the courts as a whole are, are moving more towards an E document system. So this will, it'll be one, it's, it's one in the same. There'll be a second contract amendment that will be coming before the commission that will actually be to expand the space to accept these documents from, from the Probate Court. And I didn't mention this earlier, and I apologize, the Clerk is part of this working group that we've been discussing these records in Vigliotti, so they're, they are part of the process.
And I would assume also Treasurer, Treasurer's Office and others.
Correct.
And I'm assuming you, you probably went with the largest number of, takes up the largest storage and trying to work our way through that. But is there a backup system for those documents if they're on the, on a cloud-based system?
Yes, there, there are redundancies that, that are built into, and that, that's part of the system. I would be remiss, I'm, I'm not technical as far as, as IT, but, you know, the, the system that they've chosen has been vetted by, by the county's DOIT department, and, you know, they, they, they are part of this process as well. So it's, you know, we're, we're making sure to check all the boxes.
And there, I've got two more real quick ones. They, are we not adding to the problem? Are, are all departments online right now with scanning their documents as they're going along, rather than adding to the storage?
I, I know that there's been an initiative that we've been working through the county. Procurement, for example, we are all electronic as it relates to our records and our backups. So, you know, we stopped creating paper probably around the 2014, 2015 era. And so, you know, we've, we at least, in, I can speak certainly on procurement, that, that, that's the case. I know other departments have been working towards that, you know, and again, I'd be happy to come back and discuss, you know, what our plan is with, with other departments following this program.
Okay, how, how do you handle if there are documents missing that were in the, that were to be scanned? Is there, what type of language do you have for that? I mean, that protects the county and protects the court?
But, so Scanning America has provided, you know, their, their backup plan. It's in part of the proposal, which is part of, of the, part of the contract, as well as they have a very robust insurance policy that, you know, protects the county against any liability.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Prior to this contract, was there another for scanning documents? It seems like I recall another company or another contract.
The Register of Deeds currently has a contract that they go through and, and scan and upload the, their historical records. And trying to think, that, that's the only one that comes to mind right now.
Okay, and you wouldn't know what company that was, or was that company one that put in a bid to process or, or to shred?
No, that, that company, they don't destroy records, and they're kind of a unique niche in that the, the survey maps are, are quite large, the old historical records, so that it's, it's hard to compare apples to apples on that one. DOIT, when, when they were working with the administration, you know, went out to look for the most, oh, thank you, Mary, US Imaging is, is the company that, that they're discussing. I think actually, US Imaging was one of the companies that we looked at, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. I'll have to go back on, on those notes, but Scanning America, out of the, the companies that we looked at for scanning, removal, and destruction, this was the, the most favorable pricing to the county.
Okay, was there a contract, though, that shredded? It, it seems like I remember last year, there was another company. I'm just trying to figure out, what did they do and what did they complete in the Vigliotti Building?
Well, there, I know that they've been, the, the courts and the clerk have been going through and trying to remove records that are no longer needed. And so, it's possible they could have fired a, a shredding company to dispose of records. I'll, quite honestly, I'll have to go back, Commissioner. I, I, from the clerk's scanning perspective, I, I don't recall anything, but it doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Okay, I'm just wondering about the, are we, what did they do versus what we are looking at doing at this point in this contract?
We, we were working with the Clerk's Office on this approach, and, and so, you know, they've, they've been part of the group and the discussion as we're going through. So, you know, the Clerk's Office, the courts, the administration, and DOIT, we're, we're all part of the core group, supporting this decision to, to move with Scanning America.
So, in the scope of service, is there a overlap in what the prior company is doing in this contract? That, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
No, I do not believe so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Morecki, did you still have a question?
No, my question's already been answered, thank you.
Okay, are there any additional questions on this contract?
Chair.
Yes, ma'am. I am told by our fiscal staff that there may be an issue with the account number as listed.
Okay, the contract will be charged. Okay, can we work that out, probably approve upon a correction of the account number?
Are you with correction?
Yes, I am.
Or is, is Mary or Mark on the line to discuss what the problem is?
Chair. I had emailed back with Erin about, so the fund source, the, right now, they're using General Fund, and since these are COVID dollars, the, the fund should be 298, which is what is for COVID monies. So, we can have the contract returned, and they could fix the funding source to be 298 versus the General Fund 101, and send it back to us before full board, if that will work with Erin and management and budget.
Okay, Erin, did you note that?
Yes, yep, yes, we can, we can make that change, and I'll work with Huey, the CFO, to make sure that, that we get this uploaded and sent back before Thursday.
Okay, so we'll, procedure-wise, we'll approve it or not approve it, we'll take the vote and see what happens. But if it should get approved, it'll be contingent upon the corrected dollar amount for full board. I mean, the corrected account number for full board.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Is there a motion?
So move with the contingency of correct the account number.
Support, Morecki.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. One more time, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Basham.
Yes.
Commissioner Baydun.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dobbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kenezak.
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware. Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on item number five, discussion with the administration regarding the comprehensive executive budget for fiscal years 2021 and 2122.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to have a high-level, brief discussion about the budget. As you know, we didn't get it until last week, so now we're under the gun to make sure that we thoroughly review it, have our budget hearings and then have something approved before October 1. So this is an opportunity to do that. Again, our first budget hearing will be today at 1 o'clock. So those commissioners who aren't able to tune in to all of the budget hearing, I just want a brief overview from the administration about any highlights from the budget. And then those are able, please tune in at 1 o'clock to get the budget process going as we have the first budget hearing at 1 o'clock today. So I don't know if Huey is going to do this, but whoever from the administration, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, let, let, Khalil's gonna start now filling some blanks. We'll do it that way.
Okay, go ahead, Khalil.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everybody, to the rest of the body. For your patience, I want to thank, obviously, Madam Chair and the Chair of Ways and Means, Commissioner Varga, as well as the commission staff for their patience with this budget. Yes, we know it's a little late, but obviously we are facing unprecedented times and, and so I, I really want to thank everybody for a lot of cooperation that's truly necessary and needed in, in the pandemic and the worlds that we're facing. Our administration has been, you know, fortunate to work with this body and submit, you know, five previous balanced budgets to which we're very, very proud of. And last year, I think we all worked very, very hard to be very cautious, given the world that we're facing and to take necessary steps, prudent steps, to ensure that we're doing the best that we can for the residents. With the fiscal 2021 budget, you know, our hope was, you know, in looking at, you know, the future to come and checking to see, you know, this, what we've done, you know, in the fiscal 20 budget to get ready for it, you know, our, our high-level philosophy really was to try to provide our existing level of service for as long as we can and trying to figure out the best way to do that. And so the budget that we submitted, really very high-level highlights are, you know, elected officials' budgets remain the same to their pre-COVID budget, chargeback units are taking a 5% cut and, and Third Circuit Court has an agreement to their, to their budget, to which Huey and Kevin can get into a little bit. There are some exceptions to that, obviously, you know, if, if elected officials or departments lost out on grants, you know, that's gonna amend the budget a little bit. And so the way we were able to accomplish, I think, the, the ultimate goal, which was, you know, let's try to keep our, you know, sort of existing level of services that was pre-COVID for as long as we could, was really utilizing a good portion of the CARES Act dollars for recoverable, reimbursable payroll expenses, particularly in the Sheriff's Department and Health and Wellness and Homeland Security. And so, you know, having those funds available, which, you know, our outside counsel and our consultants tell us are absolutely legal, it's what other governments are doing, and, and so it's very, very helpful to help us, you know, with the fiscal situation that we're gonna be facing, anticipating revenue shortfalls as other governments are doing. One big caveat that I just really want everybody to have a bit of caution, you know, what we said was, we want us, you know, employ as, as a philosophy to try to maintain our existing level of service as long as we can. We all know the county has 7.8 mils. 5.6 of the 7.8 mils are collected in the summer taxes. We won't know what that collection really looks like until the middle of December, at the end of, at the end of this year. And so, you know, if revenues, and we'll monitor this the whole time, but if revenues start coming in less than what we expect, we plan to come to, to this body with budget adjustments and, and reducing services if revenues come in less. If, if revenues come in the same, we hope to maintain our level of service. If revenues come in greater, we hope to probably proceed with a bit of caution as we know that in future years, you know, through previous pandemics, we saw revenues go down as years went on. If you remember 2008, through that recession, you saw revenues go down in 2009, 2010, 2011 and 12, all the way until 13, before things started creeping up slowly. So again, we're to caution, I mean, this is a, a good budget, it's a balanced budget and it's good news, but I do think we ought to have a very, very strong bit of caution as years go forward. So that's the high-level strategy with it. Huey, I don't know if you have any other highlights or anything I've missed?
No, I do want to just reiterate that, you know, things are, are changing and things are very fluid and so, you know, we will, you know, when, if, if things go south, so to speak, as we get into fiscal 21, you know, we'll, we'll have to do a similar exercise that we did before. We're setting up mechanisms to really monitor that summer levy collection that Khalil was talking about as we speak. So, you know, we really do, you know, the word I use with Khalil is agility. We need to be agile in, in these times. Fiscal solvency is very critical to, you know, you all, the administration has done a lot of work, commission's done a lot of work to make sure that we remain fiscal solvent and we're going to have to have that same level of focus as we go through these uncharted waters over the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Are there any discussion items? Would you like to say anything, commissioners, before the Ways and Means meeting? Those of you who are on Ways and Means, you'll get the details at 1 o'clock, but the commissioners who aren't on Ways and Means, they have a burning question that you'd like to ask right now, is the opportunity to do so? And I see, Commissioner Varga, that's the Commissioner Varga, Commissioner McCormick, Baker McCormick and Commissioner Dobbs.
Could I give everyone the budget Zoom number so that way if they want to get tuned in?
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll send out that information again to all commissioners if they'd like to join you at 1 o'clock today.
They have it.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Oh, Madam Chair, I have no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Dobbs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to just double-check something I wrote down with Khalil about the mills that are collected in the summer taxes. So did you say 5.6 of the 7.8 mils are collected in the summer taxes?
Yeah, approximately.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
The point being that it's the majority in the summer mills and that the, the residents have been living with the pandemic for so long, which is why we're taking the caution.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for the administration? All right, and just so commissioners, no, hold on one second, Commissioner Hattis, just to let you all know, normally we would have the budget. Thank you, everybody, put their phone up. Thank you. Normally we would have the, the budget no later than the third Thursday of September, which would be September 17th this year, because of the pandemic, getting the budget later than normal, making sure that we do our due diligence. We're looking at probably September 29th or 30th, or, or the 30th, where we'll have a special budget meeting to pass it before October 1st. So just put that in the back of your minds, commissioners, that either the 29th or 30th, we have a special meeting just for the budget so that we can have it before October 1st. Commissioner Hattis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question to Khalid. I know we have the grant to the small business people from the CARE Act. Do we have anything in mind to do anything for the nonprofit organization?
We are, one, I think the, the $50 million, you know, it's, yes, it is dubbed the Small Business Grant, but nonprofits were eligible to apply and they have been applying. And I know some of them have, have gotten awards, but we are having some discussion around nonprofits. And if you have any suggestions, Mr. Commissioner, I'm happy to talk about it with you offline. I, I will tell you this, as far as, as far as the CARES Act dollars go, and I think, and I'm not sure if it's the next agenda item, Madam Chair, or the, or the following one, but if it's the next one, we do have a presentation from our consultants about the CARES Act dollars spending and, you know, for the most part, they are, you know, I would say kind of spoken for. You know, we are gonna use the majority of the CARES Act dollars for recoverable, reimbursable expenses that the Act allows us to use for our officers and our frontline workers, which, you know, translates into helping the, the entire financial situation. We always try to keep a buffer, which I think the, the consultants will explain, but I'm happy to have this discussion with you.
Thank you. I look forward to discuss that with you because I know some of the nonprofit organization hurt and they're way drying and they need some help, so I hope we look into that if we have enough fun.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dobbs, did you have another question?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Your hand was up and then lastly, okay, Mr. Abell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to point out some things about the process and, and some of the things that were, that we had to deal with, you know, regarding the development of the budget. First, I want to thank the administration. I know that they were working hard. There were a lot of issues this year. We, there, there was an abbreviated process in the development of the budget and, and as a result of getting it late, there, there will be, we're, we're compacting more budget hearing dates in a shorter period of time than we've ever, ever done before. So I know it's gonna be difficult, but I want to thank everybody in advance for, for the process. You know, we've, we've got to get this approved by, by the end of the month and, and we're in line to do that, but it's gonna take cooperation from everybody. You know, there, there were a lot of uncertainties associated with the development of this budget, you know, foremost of that is, is, you know, COVID and the pandemic and issues related to that. I know that we're, that there may be a hit in property taxes, but the good news, I mean, there, there are some areas of good news. One is, one is this year, you know, we have a higher state equalized value than taxable value, so, you know, on a going-forward basis, and this may take several years to realize, you know, we've gotta lose $14 billion worth of value before it really affects our taxes, although there are timing issues associated with that. You know, that the collection versus reimbursement through the delinquent tax revolving fund. Another uncertainty was, you know, the matter dealing with the treasurer and, and the court case that was, you know, resolved against us and, and against counties in general regarding foreclosures and, and auctions. We don't know how that is going to impact us on a going-forward basis, but all of that is going to be resolved. So my, my point is, is that once this budget does get approved, there may be some issues that we will see, that, that there will be more clarity that will have to be resolved through budget adjustments that we won't be able to deal with, you know, before the approval needs to take place. So again, you know, it's, it's kind of an abbreviated schedule. We're gonna do the best we can to make sure that we, we hit all the highlights and, and approve as good a budget as we can before the year begins.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, thank you all, and as you say, that goes into our next item. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We are on item number five, discussion, I'm sorry, item number six, discussion with the administration on CARES Act expenditures.
Okay, can we, do you need to share your screen or do we have it to put up?
Madam Chair, thank, Huey, you wanna have Jeff, is Jeff on?
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff is ready to, Jeff's ready to go. Jeff Reese and Jeff Van Cowsky are all ready to go. Let me start off by saying, Madam Chair, you know, the administration did distribute the, you know, the report for review by the commissioners. And today we have Guide House here, you know, Jeff Van Cowsky, who was managing director of Guide House, has been really leading the effort for helping us administer these funds, who's prepared to go into the details of the report that was submitted to you last week. And so without further ado, I don't know if staff is going to display the report that was sent or if, if that's not available, we can, we can work something out. Maybe I can share my screen.
Okay. If, if we can display it, we will, but we'll go ahead and have Jeff begin while we work on that.
Perfect, thank you. Jeff?
So thank you, Huey, Khalil, thank you, Chair Bell and Committee of the whole. As, as Khalil had said, I'm Jeff Van Cowsky, I'm the Detroit market partner for Guide House. Our firm is currently advising numerous state and local entities across the country, including six of the largest counties, including, including Wayne. And as the, as the, as the commission knows, Wayne County received approximately $188.3 million for Corona relief, relief funds with its allocation from the federal government. And then with the state of Michigan's fiscal challenges related to their own fiscal situation, the state of Michigan canceled its revenue sharing allocation and then was using its own CARES funds to pass through to, through to the county. We are anticipating the county will receive approximately 18 million or so and we're expecting that, that wire transfer to happen sometime this week. So in essence, the, the total eligible CRF fund allocation for the county right now is 204.1, for 206.3 million. So the, so 206. And, and the, what we generally think that of, of that allotment, you know, the, we've put together a detailed budget if it's, if it's projected on, onto the screen, but we've organized the budget based on similar categories that have been required by U.S. Treasury. You'll generally, as kind of Khalil had said, the, the primary driver so far of, of the CARES budget has been our expenses for payroll, for public safety, public health and emergency systems. The, one of the critical things that the, the fund was created to provide ready, ready funding for the public health emergency. And for this reason and as matters of convenience, it, it's assumed that payroll costs for public health, public safety are eligible expenses. So when you can see on that screen, you can see the highlights of the 81 million for public state, public safety and health, the, as well as the 33.6 million, which is, which is payroll for other departments that have been substantially shifted from their normal course of duty to, to respond to the COVID crisis, crisis, as well as the administrative leave of 12.3 million. One of the big drivers is, as the, as, as, as this, this group already knows that, and it's been discussed, the entity, we've already approved $50 million for the small business assistance and the, and to date, 11, 11 million has, has, has been spent in the, and then very typical to other, other allocations, a big commitment to personal protective equipment, PPE, and, you know, other, other abilities with respect to public health, health and a real, a larger investment in terms of improving tele, tele, telework and very similar to the discussion we just had on the, on the telework and the visualization with some of the records for, for Vigliotti. When you look at the, the entire, the entire budget, right, the, the, you can see the total allotment of the 206.3 and we've got a committed, committed spend of 2.4, 2.204 million. That leaves roughly in excess right now of about 2.22 million, which, you know, the, we think is very prudent right now, given that we have no, you know, no deep understanding on, you know, with respect to kind of second waves and then what's gonna happen. Obviously, if, if second, if, if a second wave does occur, that's a lot more significant, that will drive a lot of the more quick investment into, into, into PPE. So we think that they, you know, this, this budget is both, both prudent. You can see to date, the, we've spent 77.5 million in column E. And what I wanted to do is to really to just to dimensionalize, you know, the, you know, this budget and this spend. So the- the first, uh, all states and uh large counties such as Wayne were responsible for submitting their their, both their allocations and spend data as of June 30th. Um, and then Treasury came out with an analysis on June, uh, on July 23rd, including Wayne, all of the Michigan counties as well as uh, as well as the rest of the United States. And just to give the uh, give a couple of data points, uh, Wayne County at June, at June 30th had, had spent 25.3%. While Oakland County was 21, uh, Macomb was eight, uh, and Kent County was 5.7%. So uh, you know, our, our review of this across all of, all of, all of, all of the nation, as well as in Michigan, in Michigan in general. We think that the, the both, the budget and the dollars spent to date are very prudent, especially uh, since we have generally spent a little bit of the most mo, uh, the uh, and Michigan was hit earlier in the, in the, in the process. So um, this gives you like a little bit of a, just kind of a background. You know, and then I'll, you know, the, open it up for any questions.
Okay, um, you know, I thought it was very important. We had been asking for this information for a little while now. So this was the perfect opportunity before we get into budget deliberations to have this information to see what expenses uh there are and then what we've actually spent. Uh, question that I have is uh, under which category with the Garden City Hospital and the testing equipment that we purchased, where would that fall under? Which category would that be?
Uh, that should generally be under uh, kind of public health.
Okay, so it has here the $3 million. Um, and I thought that that was going to be a little bit more. I think I thought each of the testing machines were about a million dollars each, and then the contract with Garden City was about 500,000.
And 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 the uh, and certainly as the negotiations and the stuff evolves, you know, we can, we'll, we'll obviously adjust that that amount. There's also Chair, uh, other, the, since this is only related to CRF funds, uh, some of those, uh, some of that expenditure was related to other other, other grants that wouldn't, uh, that we would use prior to using the uh, the Corona Relief Fund.
Okay, and based on this information here, you're saying we have 2.2 million dollars uh left to spend if we go through these calculations that you have here?
That is, that is correct.
And do we have any um suggestions or do we need some more suggestions on how to spend that, those funds? Or do we have some things in mind?
There, yeah, there, uh, we are, we have, we have a backup list of 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 already some other, other projects that we're going to be looking, looking at in early October. What we wanted to do is to get an understanding uh first, to kind of hold back to uh, to get a little bit more context in terms of kind of the how purchase orders are coming in, especially around uh, PP and health expenses.
So.
Okay, and then if I'm not mistaken, real quickly, if I'm not mistaken, um, the new uh information about the CARES Act was that it didn't have to be spent by December 31st, it just had to be spent. I think was that a provision that the Congress put into, a new provision they put into the CARE Act?
So, so Chair, just to give a little context and then uh, and um, the, so there, there's two different things that are, that are necessarily happening right now. So the uh so the first is the uh, all, all, all services need to be uh, rendered and deployed by December 30th. Uh, the, the federal government knows that there are some kind of complexities with it, within the supply chain, so they're giving some type of uh ability, and no similar, that, you know, you receive your services and you can pay your invoice anywhere between, you know, January and and uh, you know, the, you know, uh, early, early February. But the, the concept is that the uh, you know, the services are, services and work is deployed before December 30th. There is right now a large discussion, uh, and um, you know, our, our, our firm was on discussions on this, yes, in fact, yesterday in in DC. Uh, there's a lot of discussions right now from both the Democrats and the Republicans reconciling a second bill that would both uh extend the date out till the next, uh, next year, 90 days after your CAFER, as well as potentially some more additional funds. So we're, we, we believe that within the, by September, there's going to be a little bit more clarity on that towards the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Khalil, did you have something to add there?
Yeah, and I think Jeff had said it really well. This is a tricky piece, as you're pointing out, Madam Chair, right? You have until December 30th currently to spend the funds. Um, and you don't want to give any back. And what's the best way to do that, given all the discussions that are, you know, sort of handling in Washington right now, as Jeff was saying? And so I think what we did was, we, we tried to do this the best that we could, right? Try to use it as much on payroll, recoverable expenses. The buffer there, you know, in the event that there is a huge second wave, there may be more substantial shift in duties to where we may use that money to help with the same kind of thinking, which is recoverable payroll expenses. If, you know, uh, and still there's, and and there's enough money there. Um, if, you know, we have to turn around and spend it quickly before we have to give it back. You know, there isn't 10, 20, 30 million dollars there, uh, where that would be difficult either, right? There's just kind of like 2.2 million dollars where we think, you know, in the if the, if the talks completely fall through and everything settles and everybody's like, okay, you got to spend it before December 30th. Well, we, we will find ways to spend that money. But there is enough of a buffer there that if there's a huge second wave and we want to absorb that money for recoverable payroll expenses because there's a substantial shift in a lot of people's duties, we have that capability too. Especially with the budget, because, you know, when we restored uh people's budgets, we're bringing more people back um to do some work. So, you know, it did sort of a very, very fine line. What do you do? Do you wait, you know, uh, and see what happens in Congress and then run the risk of not spending the money versus do you spend the money? And and not run the risk? And we're, we're trying to find that sort of fine line. I do think we handle it better than some people. You know, who dedicated money very, very early on to some things and then weren't able to spend on some of those things. So um, decently happy with the way this turned out.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for questions. I see Commissioner Beidun and Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Beidun, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Khalil, just a quick question. I see for the allocation of the small business assistance is 50 million plus and we've spent like 11. I'm assuming that you have commitment for the balance of that 50 million already, the 39-plus million?
Yeah, and if I remember, I know this is, this, this sheet will constantly get updated. Uh, right, this is sort of the last iteration of that sheet, but I do think um, I, I, the, we, we know we have more than enough applications between our grant, the MEDC grant. We've got something like over 9,000 uh plus applications, so we're going to be fine there.
Yeah, just to add on to that, yeah, we're, we're already currently oversubscribed. And if you, if you see here on the line, it's just 50 million. So this is only the Corona Relief Fund. As Khalil said, there's an additional seven and a half million of MEDC that we're currently processing. So there'll be 57 uh million deployed to small businesses in Wayne County.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
I just wanted to, well, a lot, that, that was one of the questions that I had, uh, but I did want to ask about is, Jeff, are you the one that's monitoring this to make sure that we spend this down, that uh, the obligations that we've already got out there are taken care of? And you said that it's likely they'll extend the deadline uh for expending the dollars till into next year. But uh, I would assume you're the one that's sort of monitoring that, or is it Khalil?
No, the, it's a combined team, but you know, the, under the Khalil and and Huey and the MNB team. Um, we have, uh, the Guide House team is, has, has dedicated people working with both Aaron in Health and Human Services and do it, the large technology spends that we meet with them weekly, monitoring purchase orders uh and the, and getting it through uh to the payment process. We also have, uh, we've had, because we've had such a large amount of expenditure on the small business thing, we've also added people to support accounts capable to get the dollars out. Because we've never had such a large amount of spend uh in a short period of time in the county.
And are those uh small grants, uh, the, the grant dollars for back to work program, is that, have they been sent out already?
So far, there's been 11 million and there was a big uh, that's going to Treasury today uh, uh, over, you know, the uh, so yeah, the dollars are being deployed uh weekly.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions on the CARES Act funding?
I have a question, Meraki.
Commissioner Meraki, yes.
Thank you. Um, the, the item that we just um voted on, the scanning of the documents for the court. Is that under number 15, items not listed above?
It's uh, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I just saw it. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Row, row 11.
Yep, thank you. I missed it.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Beidun, you have a question or your hands still there? Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, any additional?
My question, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions on this sheet? And I would request that we get this um pretty regularly, just to see what the updates are, at least um every couple of weeks. So that we're on top of where our spend is and um what we need to do, if anything, to help along.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions on the CARES Act expenditure report? Okay, here we go. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We're moving to item number seven, requesting commission approval of an amendment to the Wayne County procurement ordinance to provisionally increase the authority delegated to the county executive to approve and execute contracts on behalf of the executive branch.
Okay, I don't know if this goes to Khalil or to Aaron first.
Yeah, sure. I'll take it, Madam Chair, and then Aaron can answer all the questions.
Yeah, I was going, you want to share?
Um, Aaron, you got your presentation, right? I was gonna go through a high level, Madam Chair, and feel any questions if anybody has. That's okay.
Okay, go ahead, Khalil.
So I want to thank you for this. Um, obviously, you know, a couple of months ago, when we presented, you know, sort of our plan to handle the pandemic, one of the items we did talk about was procurement changes. We thought processes and procedures could be improved at the county. We thought process and procedure changes would result in um, you know, in savings and time and resources here. And, you know, Wayne County has, you know, for years, many years, notoriously been known for its, you know, bureaucratic and cumbersome procurement process. Have asked Aaron to do a lot of research on this, and he's done a lot, uh, in looking at what other municipalities look like and compare to ours. And if it's one thing we know. You know, we know Wayne County is one of the largest governments, the largest county in the state of Michigan, top 20 in the country. Uh, we know in the state, it, while it has the largest budget, uh, and it serves the most residents, it has one of the lowest thresholds for delegated authority within the state of Michigan. And what we know is, you know, it takes about 111 days to get through our procurement process. We know we've got almost 60 retroactive contracts currently. We know that between us and commission staff, there's well over 600 returns just in terms of submitting the, the, the process over and over again. When you look at other counties, they have, you know, different sets of goals and priorities. You know, many counties have a goal of seeing their, their process, you know, get through their commission process within 30 days. And that's a goal that we, we ought to share. Um, and so, you know, in looking at all these things, Aaron's done a lot of research and talking to other municipalities and figuring out where they were. Um, and it turns out, you know, there are things that we can clean up from a process standpoint, and I don't think there's any debate about that. There's no dispute. Certainly internally, we are looking to clean up different uh approval processes and the amount of approvals that it takes. Uh, and just trying to find a smoother, you know, less bureaucratic internal process on our end. Uh, but we feel very, very strongly that the delegated authority amount of 50,000 is too low for a budget our size. Um, as Aaron has done his research, you know, uh, you, you know, places like Oakland County have a delegated authority as high as 250,000 dollars. Um, and in, 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 in looking at that, and talking to folks in the commission, um, you know, we feel like we want to take the delegated authority amount to 150,000. 150,000 would be roughly about 16% of all the contracts that come before this body. We feel like that is enough of a sample size. We'd like for it to be more, to be honest, but I think that's enough of a sample size to do on a test trial run over the course of one year. And so the proposed ordinance in front of you uh is a, is a test run. From, you know, October 1 to September 30th uh for the, for the fiscal year of '21. Uh, and if no action is taken at the end of that test trial run, uh, you know, the, the procurement ordinance will reserve back to its uh current form, where delegated authority amounts are about 50,000 dollars. However, in that year, if the administration can come back and prove to this body that we have had efficiencies, uh, that we've reduced the amount of retroactive contracts, that we reduced the amount of time that it takes to get through um the commission process, uh, that it's resulted in savings, and we could ask the, this body at that time to make a permanent change. And so, you know, we, we feel very, very strongly that, um, you know, this is going to help processes and procedures. Uh, we hope that it helps it enough. Uh, just to give folks a sense, you know, the delegated authority amount that is about 150,000 represents less than about 1% of the overall budget that comes to this body, but 16% of the contracts. Uh, and so we feel strongly that um, you know, between the 16% of the contracts, the approval processes, we, we hope to achieve, you know, uh, you know, 20% more efficiencies throughout the process, making the 80% that goes in front of you, uh, a much smoother, faster, cleaner process as well, that hopefully results in the 100% of the overall work being done a little bit better. So that's, that's the proposed amendment to the, to the procurement ordinance. Happy to take any questions.
You want Aaron to go next to do four questions?
Yeah, sure. Aaron, can you share your screen?
Yeah, hang on, hang on just a minute. Okay.
You look way younger without the beard, tells you one thing. First time I see you without.
Yeah, I, that, that was a, that was a request, so.
And I do have hands, just as FYI, Commissioner Basham, Beidun and Khalil, after we hear um, Aaron's.
Okay, um, can, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, let me get it to, there we go. Okay, um, so, so as Khalil touched on, it, it takes on average 111 days for a contract to go through, being entered into the system to the time that it's approved. Uh, the average procurement contract requires 16 approval steps. Now, by comparison, if you look at the city of Detroit, uh, they're able to, uh, or their contract process is 54 days on average with six approval steps in the system. Oakland County approves their allocation of funds for contracts within 30 days. In going through and looking at what several of the, the items that really jumped out i- in researching this, you know, right now, the county has two uh systems that we use, the JD Edwards system on the financial side and TCM on the contracting side. TCM and JD Edwards do not integrate. Um, now, future state, we're moving towards Oracle Cloud, which will eliminate the need for both of these systems and will have an end-to-end solution. Uh, but right now, it's looking like, um, you know, late 2021 by the time that that, that uh system is rolled out. So we need to, to do some things in the immediate future to help this system. Secondly, within the system we do have with TCM, we have multiple required approvals. And in, in most instances in my research, uh, divisions and departments are reviewing these contracts in the approval workflow for the first time when they really should be part of the collaborative uh process in building the, the contracts. And it, and for example, the treasurer's office reviews a contract for the first time once it's in the approval workflow. One of the things I'm working on is trying to bring them further into the, or more to the beginning of the process. So they're reviewing and making sure that, that these suppliers have their taxes paid up to date before it even goes into the approval workflow. So there's some efficiencies there. Um, low delegated authority for approval thresholds. We, um, as Khalil had touched on in the next slide, we'll, we'll demonstrate, uh, we have the largest population in the state of Michigan. We have the largest budget of any county in the state of Michigan, yet we have the lowest delegated authority um to, to our other sister counties. Macomb County had, has also a $35,000 delegated authority, but they have a much lower population as well as. but they have a much lower population as well as a lower budget. And, you know, in order for the county to really be successful, we have to approach all of these issues. It's not just one thing that'll fix everything. It's all of these things in combination. So, just in as example, you know, of the 83 counties, I pulled some of the counties to really illustrate. Kent County, which has a, under a $500 million budget, has a $250,000 delegated authority. Oakland County, which is roughly a billion-dollar annual budget, also has a $250,000 authority. But some of the smaller counties, Washinaw, Livingston, also have a much higher delegated authority than we do. So, if we were to move forward with $150,000 delegated authority on procurement contracts, that would impact $10 million out of the $1.6 billion budget annually, based on last year's expenditure, which equates to less than 1%. Yet, it would yield a 16% reduction in competitively bid contracts requiring commission approval. So, it's, the dollar amounts are very small, but it helps add 16% efficiency or reduce of time in a lot of these contracts. Now, there are a couple of things that, there are key performance indicators to help measure the success if this were to be approved. Our baseline right now, as Khalil had touched on, was 111 days with 644 contract returns. And currently, year-to-date, we've had 59 retroactive contracts. So, you know, what I would like to do is, on a quarterly basis, if this goes through, report on how our average contract approval time is reduced, what our number of returns have been, and track our retroactive contracts. Secondly, and this is part of the proposed ordinance change, any and all delegated authority contracts would be submitted to the commission on a monthly basis. It would be a report pulled straight through the system, and so there's full transparency. So, and the improvement of the process and the quality of contracts, you know, I'm working with and have had discussions with both Pam and Felicia as we build new templates, as we work to retool our training. It's important that commission staff is part of that process and able to provide their guidance on this process as well. That's all for my presentation.
All right, very good. Before we go into commissioner questions, I'll just make a couple of comments. One, I've been working with the administration on this all summer. The dollar amount that was originally proposed was $250,000, which was a non-starter for me. I thought that was extremely too high. We agreed upon the 150 as something reasonable. Two, the fact that this is going to be in for a 12-month period to see how it works was a good point as well, making sure that this isn't a permanent change. This is a sunset on October 1 of 2021 to see how, if it's making a difference. The monthly reporting is also very important, that we look and see what those contracts are that were under the delegated authority. And the 111 days, that's something that the administration realizes that of that 111 days, roughly 95 to 100 is in their queue before it comes to us. We're usually pretty good at getting it through our system with the commission side, but it spends a great amount of time in the administration side, and we have to work to fix that part as well. This is part of a cumulative fix to the bureaucracy that was mentioned earlier. So, those are my comments, and I will go to Commissioner Basham, then Baydoun, then Khalil. Mr. Basham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, and this is an item that, if you're not aware, that I'm very much interested in, but, and also I'm putting sunshine on the process. And it is an issue in Wayne County. And we are spending millions of dollars to upgrade our software programs to move things along. Or, and I think you pointed out, Madam Chair, that the majority of those retroactive delays were with the administration, not the commission. But having said all that, and also one other thing, some of those counties have executives, a couple, but a lot of those counties do not have executives. So, the commission appoints the administration. And quite frankly, the mission, the commission's not delegating any of their authority to an administration. They are the administration. So, I mean, some, I mean, you listed a lot of counties, but a lot of those counties that have a higher, it's not standard, but higher items for the administration to, that are delegated, actually do not have executives. So, having said all that, this is a one-year, I guess, trial. There is accountability that was pointed out by Mr. Wagner. And so, and plus, we are in unique times. I will actually support this, Madam Chair, knowing that we already have the ability to audit, but also, this will come in front of us again, and we will be able to make a decision in one year. So, having said all this, good and bad, but I guess overall, it is an issue. And as long as we're working together with the administration, I'm sort of willing to go down that road at 150. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Khalil?
Thought I was third. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm going to echo the comments that Commissioner Basham just made with regards to some of the comparisons here that are being done. I don't know if they're apples to apples. But nonetheless, I'm good with the 150,000. But I'd like to ask Mr. Rahal, in your presentation, Mr. Rahal, you were talking about, we'll come back to a year from now, we'll come back to a year from now. Hopefully, in a year from now, we can tell you about all these efficiencies that were generated as a result of this. That's been more of the concern for me. The amount, a little bit of one, but more of the concern is the bureaucracy, which I've always said Wayne County has kind of stuck back in the 1950s sometime with some of its bureaucracy. And when I look at the red tape and all the sign-offs and everything that we need to do in order to get something before the commissioner, you know, the 27 signatures and whose desk is it on and all of that. And also, there has been kind of this low-level, I don't know what you'd call it, little warfare going on when these things come down and they have to be sent back from the commission to the executive staff for some sort of correction before we can handle it. And all of that back-and-forth action that takes place. What I didn't hear you say, Mr. Rahal, is how you're going to be working, how we're going to have a committee of some sort that will be both administration and the commission to work through these bureaucratic issues? Because this is one of the most important jobs that the commission has, and that is oversight. And I do think there are a lot of good ideas floating around, both from administration and from commission staff, about how this can be done better. But I would feel a little better here if you could discuss, Mr. Rahal, a little bit about how you see the evaluation of our processes going forward so that a year from now, we can say, oh, yeah, we have all of these, we've achieved all these efficiencies. So, if you could describe that joint working together a little bit more, how you perceive it, sir?
Sure. And I think, I think you made some really strong points. I think some of the approval processes, you know, naturally change as systems change. And obviously, we have an ERP system, and obviously, there are ongoing working groups that include, if I'm not mistaken, Erin and Huey know way more about this than I do, but some commission staff is a part of that process. But I think Erin did describe, you know, some level of working together. And I can tell you all, you know, Felicia is absolutely not shy about telling us what, you know, we may be doing wrong on a process standpoint. I think some of it is necessary until we switch over systems. And I think some of her suggestions and other suggestions from Pam and Mark and everybody, and Mary, makes sense. And I think, you know, we recognize that. But Erin, if you can, talk a little bit about how you see, in addition to the ERP stuff, maybe on how some of the training stuff will look like going forward?
Yes, through the chair. So, Commissioner Khalil, building standardized templates that are approved by both the administration and the commission staff, as we put together the work documents and the training materials and the processes and procedures, you know, having commission staff at the table as we build this entire countywide process, is crucially important for our success. And, you know, in the initial discussions that I've had with commission staff, with Pam, Felicia, and Mark, you know, they've been very receptive when we've discussed getting buy-in and sitting down at the table to build these documents together. So, that is the intent on how we approach this.
And let me just chime in, Commissioner. You know, we've had fits to start with this for a while now. Before I was chair, even since I've been chair, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Neil Allen, our staff, we sat down a few different times to go over how we can more efficiently get the process of contract approval. And then, of course, the pandemic struck in March, you know, so that's kind of been on a little bit of a back burner. But this is something that we've been going through for a few years now. So, I'm hopeful that we will come to some kind of resolve on all parts to make this a better system. And I think when we get the Oracle piece together, that's going to solve a great deal of it. But this is something that's been in discussions for a minute now.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. But now, you've brought another couple of names into the discussion that we hadn't been talking about yet from administration. And I wouldn't be so certain that Oracle is going to be some sort of a great eraser that's going to make a lot of problems go away. What I'm looking for here, Madam Chair, and I have not heard yet, I've heard all of the right buzzwords, you know, about getting feedback and all that kind. What I'm not hearing is, we're going to form a committee, or we have formed a committee. And the committee is going to consist of these people on the administration side, these people on the commission side. It's going to meet every Monday at 10 o'clock in order to work through these problems. I hear talk about a process going forward, but I have not heard of a design process that's been put together. Because you're right, Madam Chair, a lot of this discussion has gone on for much longer than just the last couple of years. So, are we going to have a committee? Are we going to designate who's on that? Are they going to have a regular meeting schedule to get us to where we need to be? And I don't see us getting there without a process, a formal process like that. So, that's why I'm waiting to hear. I'm good with the proposal today, but I really want to hear what the, what the formal process is going forward so that we can appropriately streamline the process, but also have all of the protections in it that's needed for the public. So, those are my comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And what I'll say, Commissioner, before I go to Commissioner Baydoun, is that that is something we are absolutely working on. I don't have an answer for you for a quote-unquote "formal committee", but absolutely Pam and Felicia and Erin and Khalil, we and myself are working on this diligently, and we will continue. And if we should have a quote-unquote "formal committee", I will let the commission know. Commissioner Baydoun?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo what Commissioner Basham had said. I, you know, I'm going to give them the benefit to the county executive's office. We want to work with them. This is for one year. Yeah, I think this will probably, the county government would be more efficient if they have up to 150, you know, limit as far as, you know, making contracts, and they don't have to come to the commission. So, I'm in support of this, and we'll see in one year how this is going to work out.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dobbs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of my comments have already been stated by the previous commissioners. You know, just the comparison of our county to other counties in the state and in the country. I think, I think there's a saying with National Association of Counties, if you've been to one county, you've been to one county, right? So, you know, we're all, we're all unique, and so, it is, it's a great idea to look at what other towns are doing, but we can't just say that this county has this process, so we should follow that. And then, I also was looking at this whole ordinance and the idea of making the efficiencies, but it looks to me like a lot of the inefficiencies are before the contracts even come to us, to the commission. So, if, you know, I think this is an important part of making the process more efficient, but we also need to look at the, like you said, the 95 to 100 days of the contracts where it's on the administration side. So, I just have two questions. And I know that Commissioner Khalil just talked about forming a formal committee to review this, but if we don't do that, which committee would be reviewing, receiving and reviewing the reports that would come from procurement? Ways and means?
Yeah, I was going to say probably ways and means. And, you know, give us a second to look at a formal committee. I think what Madam Chair said, I think, was perfectly, which is, you know, the intake forms and the standardized contracts, which was a good idea, I think, is something that we are developing with commission staff. And so, if you want to call that a formal committee, you know, that meets periodically, where we know we're submitting reports quarterly, and we have to be called to a committee to discuss, you know, happy to do all of those things.
Okay. And then, I had a follow-up question, was the reports will be submitted quarterly, you just said? Okay. And then, my last question is, oh gosh, I can't read my writing. Oh, so, I've been trying to find out, when were the current amounts for the delegated authorities? Do you know when the last time those have been updated or when they were set? How long have we had these same amounts?
Erin, do you know?
I don't.
Felicia, do you know? I think she may know.
Through the chair. So, the procurement ordinance is current, in its current form, was adopted in 2006. So, these amounts have not changed since that time. Prior to that, they were lower than the 50, I believe it was 35. And then, when this ordinance came about, the general threshold was 50, but that was established in 2006.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Merrikey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to expand on what Commissioner Dobbs said, in her pointing out that these contract returns, like the 644, most of them are at the administration level. I've heard you guys talk about training. Is that what you think is going to stop that problem? I mean, I don't understand how this, this whole change helps all those contract problems and all the mistakes that have been done.
Through the chair, currently, the way that the system was set up, many of the approvers are seeing a contract for the first time once it's in the approval workflow. What I'm working... Uh, what I'm, I'm working to change is moving them into a draft form of the contract, and really, it's, it's a collaborative, um, building of the contract. And once, uh, that information, uh, if it's a budget approver, if it's someone in HR looking at the FEP certificate, if it's someone in risk management reviewing the, the, um, insurance document, that would happen while it's in draft. It doesn't get returns to anybody, and it's, it's those individuals, if they have an updated form, are able to actually build the contract, uh, and approve it and move it on. A- and so it's, it's, the, the future state, the ERP system that we're moving to, that's how the, the system is developed and designed. And quite frankly, that's how the system we have currently is, is supposed to work. It's just, when it was implemented, things were changed, and so, um, key items got moved into the approval workflow, uh, as opposed to into the, the, the building of the contract upfront. A- and so I, I, I believe if we actually have a collaborative, um, building process, um, on these contracts, it will greatly, one, reduce the number of, uh, returns and inefficiencies in that. But secondly, when the contract is put into the Commission's workflow, I believe it will also greatly improve the quality of the contracts that you have.
Okay. Um, I, just for my own information, Aaron, you had said something about that the TCM side of this. It requires multiple approvals through the, through the process. We can't change those, um, those, that number? I mean, that is something that the TCM, you just have to go through that with them? We can't?
No, no, we can change that. So if I move, um, groups out of the approval workflow, my, my ideal state, a- and this is my recommendation, certainly not what would end up, uh, if, if we form a committee and work together on this, but, you know, I would propose that, um, you know, the approval workflow itself would essentially be three levels. It would be the department submitting it for approval, the CEO transmittal, and then to Commission for approval. All of that other work should happen while the contract's being built. Certainly, people can review it and, and, you know, give their sign-off electronically, however that works, but i- in that state, and this is the key crucial difference, is if a change needs to be made, or if something needs to be re-reviewed, it doesn't move back and forth. You're able to do it live in real time and make those changes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. A lot of the questions I had have been answered, but I, I think one just, that I keep coming back to is, uh, one that was, uh, previously stated too, that, um, if we are all in agreement that the problems exist, uh, not with the time that the Commission receives it and approves it, but it's on the administration side, but yet we're willing to wait on resolving those issues. Uh, and, and that's, that's troubling to me because we're gonna, what we're gonna do is fast-track things, and it's going to, I believe, compound the problem, uh, that the, the number of contracts that will have errors in them, uh, will not go away, uh, and we haven't really, uh, resolved the, uh, the problem that we have, with the true problem that we have, which is, uh, everyone is agreed. It's not with the Commission, uh, it's getting a contract that is in the right form that it should be in. And I just think we're gonna compound the problem. I, I, I agree, the process needs to be changed, um, but I'm wondering why we're trying to change it, and we're expecting the new system to come online next year. Uh, and if that happens, then the process on the administration side should be shortened. Uh, and, and I, I realize that this has been under consideration for some time, and I know, when I, I believe when I first got to the Commission, there was talks, talk about revising the procurement process, but it seems though we're only looking at one side, just raising the, the dollar limits, uh, for delegated authority. Uh, and, and that doesn't seem where to be where the problem is. I understand it's gonna reduce the number that would go to the Commission. We're in all, it sounds like we're all in agreement, that's not where the problem is. So, uh, like I said, I'm not convinced yet, uh, that that's the way to go.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Are there additional comments or questions from the Commission?
Madam the Chair, this is Al Haddas.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. My experience in the past, uh, under Economic Development Committee is, you know, many time, uh, we came to you to have something under immediate consideration. And it became, uh, a little bit annoying to me, uh, delay after delay for a very small correction of number or spelling, or, uh, any, uh, item that, uh, it might jeopardize the issue with CDVG, with other funding, uh, to meet the deadline. I think the, uh, the move, uh, to, uh, raise the amount, uh, to reduce the, uh, contract by 16%, that would relieve our, uh, legal department, uh, and staff, uh,'s work to focus and move in the other item a little bit faster, that, uh, been larger than 150,000. So I, I think the effort, it's excellent effort to, uh, uh, move forward, given the size of our county, and the budget of our county, and the growth in our county. We need to look into those things. And, uh, another favorable item, uh, to me to satisfy my colleague, Commissioner Basham, it's the retroactive reduction of, uh, those, uh, area. So I, I think in the, in the beginning, there are too many good question by my colleagues. The Commissioner, uh, opened the debate and the discussion, but to, uh, uh, move a little bit forward and keep, uh, oversight on the process, uh, through your leadership, I think it's the right move. That's why I'm in support of this, uh, item. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions, comments on this item?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Anderson?
One last question. Would someone tell me where it's in this, uh, agreement, uh, for the monthly reporting, requiring the monthly reporting of, uh, those items that are under the new threshold?
Um, I don't think it's there. Felicia, you wanna handle that? I think it's because that's, um, not a procurement issue, it's a more of a administrative issue. I don't think it's, uh, in the document itself, but Felicia might wanna weigh in a little bit on that issue.
Through the chair. Um, so the document presented to you does not discuss or address any reporting. Back to the Commission.
Would it be, um, cumbersome to put that in? Or should we just rely, know that that's gonna happen? I don't know.
Madam, Madam Chair, this is Mark Abbo. If I could, uh, address that, that is included as part of our budget instructions. And it has, and it has been included, and it will be included. Admittedly, uh, admittedly, there hasn't been, you know, great compliance regarding that, but we'll assure that, that, uh, there is greater compliance going forward.
So to the point, um, there is a reporting requirement in the current budget regarding contracts under 50. That's not what's completely been discussed here, but could the budget as moving forward, be adjusted, the language, to make sure that it covers this ordinance and the reporting we're talking about here? It can.
Yes.
I would ask that we do that, make sure it's in here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Will do. Okay, any additional questions or comments on this item? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Don't move, Madam the Chair.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Was that, uh, Commissioner Haddas and Commissioner Baydoun?
Yes.
Okay. Moved and supported. Again, any discussion or questions on this item?
Madam Chair, I'll be, uh, no vote on it. At this point, I may wind up supporting it in full board.
Okay, we're gonna wait till we get to your name, Commissioner. Which happens to be first. So roll call vote, please. Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Basham?
Yes.
Commissioner Baydoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman? Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Danny.
Yes.
Commissioner Dobbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddas?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kenezic?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware?
Yes, yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please. Such other matters as may properly be submitted before the Committee. Uh, no other matters? Next item, please.
Ma- Madam Chair?
Oh, there's a matter. Commissioner Baker McCormick?
I just wanted, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to, uh, make sure that everyone received a application for the YCCYC, um, Youth Council. And, um, just to let you know, we missed the se- signature page in that packet that was sent, and I wanna make sure that you get that. Um, so I'm gonna be sending out a entirely new packet to you to use, uh, for printing purposes and, and also giving to those students that you, uh, want to be a part or think would, would be, uh, a good part for the, uh, Youth Council. So I will be sending that today because today, um, is the application, um, the day in which the application opens until October 1st is the deadline. Also, you will be receiving from the students, once they are accepted, uh, pre-homework assignments. And, uh, it would be, uh, questions like, who are your elected officials, uh, in the city that you live in or municipality? And, uh, they will send that to you because you are going to meet with the students at least three times, uh, during, during the, uh, school year. Um, and when I say meet, it might be probably, I'm quite sure, by Zoom. Um, and I just want you to know that you will be receiving information from your student that you choose to be a part in the Youth Council. Uh, again, the application will be coming to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Look forward to getting that information. Any other such matters?
Madam Chair, yes, I, I have a quick question. I don't know who can answer this, but a couple people reached out to me, asking me if the county is gonna offer any programs for shredding documents. Did, uh, we did that in the past, didn't we? Like, we have, uh, locations where people can drop off documents to be shredded.
Uh, good question. Uh, Andy, are you familiar with, uh, any countywide shredding efforts? And if not, could you, uh, relay that and let us know by full board?
Yeah, I'll look into it. I've not heard anything for right now on shredding efforts.
Thank you, Andy.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Any other such matters? Hearing none, next item?
Public comments?
Is there anyone from the public? You can unmute the lines. Is there anyone on Zoom who would wish to make a comment to the Wayne County Commission? There's an opportunity for public comments. Anyone on the phone or on Zoom who would like to make comments to the Wayne County Commission? You have two minutes to do so, if, if you'd like. Uh, Madam Chair, do we get any emails? No emails were received. One more time, is there anyone on Zoom or on the telephone who would like to make a public comment to the Wayne County Commission? Okay. Hearing none, next item?
Adjournment?
Show move.
Support.
Okay, mean adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. And remember, you have a 1 o'clock Ways and Means meeting. Thank you so much.